fails. The current budget crisis puts Westford's essential services, strong schools, and sustainability efforts at risk. The League therefore supports the Proposition 2 and 1/2 override and encourages you to vote yes on Articles 1, 2, and 3. We are mindful of the financial hardship that override poses for some residents. The League encourages everyone to learn more about Westford's various tax release programs and to apply for any needed assistance. Lastly, the League would like to thank everyone for taking part in this important aspect of our town governments. And while we recognize the many demands on your time, the League urges you to stay as long as you can possibly until the bitter end. Thank you.
Thank you. At microphone C.
Yeah, Bob Carter, 8 Nutting Road. I make a motion to dismiss Article 1.
Is there a second to the motion to dismiss? Do you want to give the reason for your motion, Bob?
I think the town needs to live within its means. We have a budget under Article 4. The override lasts forever. I'm against the concept. We knew this was coming. I think we need to do a better job and tighten our belts. Everybody else is having to do that.
Well, Bob, can I, may I just ask you, would not the appropriate way to do that be to vote against Article 1 so that we could have discussion before we move to dismiss it?
There are different strategies to move forward. This is my strategy. I would entertain everyone. We can vote to dismiss or not. And it puts a big thumbs up, thumbs down, real quick.
All right, well, we're
My opinion.
We're discussing the motion to dismiss only. Can everyone who has questions or comments for the main article step back, please, from the microphone? And if you want to address the motion to dismiss, please step forward. Okay, is, is, microphone C.
Okay. Dennis Galvin from 90 Conker Road, member of the Finance Committee, and speaking for myself, I would agree with the motion to dismiss. Basically, if you, if Articles 1, 2, and 3 pass, it's going to be a 15% to 20% increase in all of our property taxes. The stabilization fund will institutionalize overspending. It will kill the incentives to reduce spending and to restructure town government, which is absolutely essential for us to meet our future financial sustainability, all right? Taxes should never be raised unless the government has been able to demonstrate that they've applied their, their resources effectively. That has not been done in this case. The budget review this year revealed that public safety management is top-heavy, that the vendor contracts and the fleet vehicle management can be much more improved, that positions funded by federal funds are now being absorbed in the town budget against the, the recommendations of our previous town manager. The state is walking away from local aid, which makes it virtually impossible for us to, to fund our property, our services through property taxes unless we're going to hit a significant hit on people of low income and fixed income. We need to look at regionalization, and it's not even being discussed. Lastly, the town overcommitted itself in negotiations with the teachers' unions and justified increases using a, a market basket of towns or an average per capita income of $96,000 to $72,000. There are $3 million in reserve accounts funds that could be, some which could be applied to the town, to the school operating budget, has, no one can tell us how much. As far as the inflation, energy, and health insurance, all the result of failed policies in Washington, which can be changed by simply changing the leadership in Washington, should not be used as a pretext to open up our, to increase our taxes.
Dennis, your time is up.
All right, thank you. Vote yes for the dismissal.
I think we got the point. Okay, since this has clearly opened up the discussion of the entire article, I'll allow anybody who has something they want to
Madam Moderator.
Anyone who wants to
Order on the right.
Anyone who wants to speak on the article to approach the microphone. Who has a point of order? Yes, sir.
Just a point, Nate McKinnon, 8 Sherlock Lane. On the point, so the gentleman previously, Madam Moderator, was speaking to the main motion, not the motion to dismiss. So if there's a motion to dismiss, seems like a technical challenge to try and distract from the main article itself, and wonders whether or not the question at that point would just be decided, and if the folks who make a motion to dismiss would accept the result of such a motion on main passage at that point. So I would just challenge the town meeting and the moderator to push back against a technical challenge. The merits even on the discussion about whether or not we should be dismissing this went back to the article itself. And so from that perspective, Madam Moderator, request that we move quickly to, to, to reject the motion to dismiss.
Right. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna check for one, okay. Everybody needs to vote to express their approval or disapproval with their vote because it really is just a waste of time for us to have, be interrupted with applause or boos or anything like that. I just want to check with council about the technical aspect of what we can discuss on the motion to dismiss as opposed to the underlying motion, so please bear with me for a moment. Okay, so for clarification, the debate on a motion to dismiss should be strictly limited to procedural reasons for dismissal and not to the substance of the main motion. So, going back to what I originally said, if there are people at the microphone who wish to specifically say why this motion should be dismissed as opposed to discussed because of some sort of procedural error that needs to be addressed, please approach the microphone. And everyone else who's speaking to substance, please step back. I'm not going to allow any comments relative to the substance of the article. Okay, so let's go to microphone B. Is there anyone there that wants to speak specifically to the dismissal of the article and why substantively it should, why procedurally it should be dismissed? Okay.
Mary Beckencourt, 70 Pleasant Street in Forge Village. I would speak to the procedural piece that this motion to dismiss, and it's been seconded, is a surprise motion, and I don't believe that it's bearing for all of us, whether we are on one side or other of any article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. At microphone C, is there anybody there speaking on the technical aspect of dismissal?
Yes, Ryan Rawl, 62 Providence Road. I just want to say briefly that the person who brought the motion clearly said it was his strategy. It's the most anti-democratic strategy I've ever heard.
Please, folks.
If you want to talk about the merits of this article, I'm all for it. Against, for, doesn't matter. But to stall this entire process by bringing a motion to dismiss when everyone is here to have a well-informed discussion and vote on the merits with no procedural infirmity, no basis to not consider the article, is just a waste of everyone's time. We've already wasted almost 10 minutes on a worthless motion. That's my position. I suggest you vote against the motion to dismiss.
Thank you. At microphone C, is there anyone there speaking to the technicality of the reason for dismissal? No? Okay.
Yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Sorry. Andy Malio, 23 Pierce Road. I think we should vote against the article to dismiss or drop it entirely until we have gone through Article 1 line by line, just like we are not allowing the question to be moved until we have gone through Article 1 line by line.
Okay, I think there've been a few comments about the fact that we need discussion before we can dismiss, so if someone has something else to say besides that, anyone at that microphone? Yes?
It was Miss Sawyer, 6 Holly Lane. I would add that as the legislature, at least in theory, we've come here with an open mind. So the article, excuse me, the motion to dismiss assumes that everybody has come with a yea or nay vote, but at least if we're abiding by town meeting, we're also listening and thinking and legislating.
Thank you. Yes?
Gloria Miller, 14 Hutchins Way. I echo the comments that have been made. We should reject this procedural hijinks motion to dismiss. There has already been a lengthy soliloquy on the merits of the motion, so it would be patently unfair to dismiss this motion. Let's get back to the merits and move things along. Thank you.
Is there anyone at microphone D? No. Yes, sir. At microphone B. Is there someone there at microphone A? I'm sorry, it's a little hard for me to see. Okay, microphone B.
Bill Belada, 52 Nutting Road. Just a question. Even if we motion to dismiss it right now, it's still on the ballot, correct? And it still gets voted on the ballot? And if it passes the ballot, we have to all come back here again?
So as the town manager said, it has to pass in both places. It must pass both at town meeting and on the ballot.
Right, but my, my question specifically is, if it's dismissed right now and then it passes at the ballot, we're all going to end up back here again, correct?
I see. If, yes, if the select board wants to get
I just want everybody to know that.
Thank you. Emily, are you speaking to the technical?
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. I don't know if this is to the technical aspect, but this, as Kristin last said, is a historically huge town meeting, and I think the benefits of going line by line through the budget will educate people who may not have spent time doing that, who may not have attended all of the public meetings that the town organized to inform and work through this process. And I think we should not dismiss this motion because I think it's a great opportunity for people to learn the nuts and bolts of how Westford is run, and also how carefully the people that we have elected and appointed to do that work on our behalf have carefully negotiated us to this compromised override.
Okay, I, I think that's enough discussion of this technical issue, so I'm going to call for the vote. If you agree that we should dismiss Article 1 at this point in time, then you'll vote yes by pressing your green button on the clicker. If you disagree and you do not want to dismiss this article, you'll vote no by pressing the red button. And remember, you're not going to do that until I tell you the vote is open, okay? Is everybody clear on what we're voting on? We are voting whether or not to dismiss. If you agree to dismiss and have no further discussion of this article, you vote yes. If you do not want to dismiss and wish to discuss the article further, you vote no. Voting is open. If you don't get your okay right away, press the button again and give it some time, give it a few seconds. When so many people are voting at once, it takes a little longer for the votes to go through. I know it seems endless, but it's only been a minute and a half. We're gonna, we're gonna give another 30 seconds, okay? Okay, voting is closed. The motion fails. The numbers are
463, yes.
463, yes.
1498.
And 1498, no. All right, we'll now take comments on the underlying article, the underlying motion, so please line up at the microphone again. And is there a gentleman there at microphone A? Yes, sir.
My name is Ryan Duncan. I live at 57 Lakeshore Drive North. I'm lake-adjacent. I don't live on the lake. You'll know what that means if you're in the community. I'd just like to say I'm bald and I see a lot of people in my camp. My head is going to fry as the day goes on, and I'm already sweating and I'm getting cranky. And I think that's going to impact all of us as the day goes on. So with that being said, I think most of us know how we're going to vote. I don't think any amount of information is going to sway our decision, and I'd really like to encourage everyone to be considerate of that. With that, I'd like to put a motion forward to go through the budget now, line by line, and then we can present discussion or debate once we're informed.
Sir, thank you for your suggestion, but honestly, I've given this a lot of thought over the last month, and I think this is the best way to do it. I'm going to go forward with that. At microphone B.
Hi, my, my name is Rachel Amato, 88 Chamberlain Road. I have a couple of comments and then a couple of questions, if that's okay, Madam Moderator. I'm a Realtor in town, and I just wanted to give some feedback on people, for people, that they talk about whether home values change with school systems, and the question, the answer to that is yes, they do, but maybe not to the extent you might think. So for example, I have several clients looking in Westford, but they decided that the Westford taxes were too high, so they're buying in Chelmsford. And I also had a few people that wanted Westford because the school systems are so great, but then they looked at all the information online in terms of this override and how people were reacting to it, and they opted to go somewhere else. So I just wanted to give that feedback for people, just so they know that everybody here is our neighbors and we should be nice to everybody and thank all the town employees for all the hard work they've done. My question is, there's $3 million in a stabilization fund or some fund for the schools. How is that able to be spent? So that's my first question. And I have a second question. Does one, the second question is, I know the town of Concord had done an override, and they allowed people to get reduced fees on the override if they went and signed up. Did Westford ever consider doing something similar?
Thank you for your questions, Rachel. Can we get somebody to answer the school question first? Valerie Young, Chair of the School Committee, and Chris Chu, Superintendent of Schools.
Hi, it is true that the schools do have different buckets where we take in money based on, a lot of them are based on fees, so you can think of like school lunch as an easy example, those we call the revolving accounts. We share all this information through our FinCom hearings. We do have balances in some of them that make sense. For example, state law requires that you keep three months of expenses in the school lunch revolving fund. We also keep a years of expense for several other things that we think are important to the community to keep track, to keep funding, even if there was a blip in participation. We've also increased our usage of these fees through the initial budget presentation as well as increased, added to those amounts through our FinCom hearings.
Do we want to show a slide?
And we have a, we do have a slide.
The backup slide?
If you think that's helpful.
If it's helpful.
And just to add to that point, for example, the food service revolving account, as Valerie just mentioned, it is strictly regulated as to how it can be spent. It can only be used to support the universal meals and the food program at the school. So you can't use money that's in the food service account to pay for transportation costs or to pay the salary of someone who doesn't work or support the food service program. So one of the things that we're worried about is that we've, that we can use that fund to help offset costs for people who do support the food service program. So we're increasing that usage to help pay for some of our custodial costs because the custodians support the food service program. But we have to have a very specific algorithm to show that it's only supporting the time that they are supporting the food service.
Another point I'd like to make is that we're not, there, there are some balances that have crept up through COVID years in different accounting, and we've committed to gradually using them, but you wouldn't empty your savings in one cause, in one lump sum for recurring expenses. So even if we wanted to use everything and draw everything down to zero, that wouldn't be best practice because it just pushes the deficit to next year.
Okay, let's get the answer to the other question. Kristin, Kristin Last, Town Manager.
So I believe the question was that Concord had an override, and there were certain programs that the town of Concord offered for those who could not or did not want to pay for that override. I cannot speak to the town of Concord, but I can speak to the town of Westford, that we do have a variety of programs through the assessors' office, through, for low income, for veterans, for seniors, for others. So we do encourage, if you do have a struggle, even in today's day, with or without an override, that you do visit the assessors' office or see the Cameron Senior Center, as we do have plenty of programs for those who may qualify. Thank you.
At microphone C, Alyssa.
Alyssa, Nacashon Hillsburg, Betty Lane. Madam Moderator, previously someone asked if we could see the vote count on the Jumbotron.
I'm sorry, can you, can you come closer to the microphone? I can't quite hear you.
Hi, Madam Moderator. Previously, someone asked if we could see the vote count on the Jumbotron. I believe you said the systems are disconnected, so we could not. I continue to hear people around me asking, can't we see the vote count? So I thought
Okay, so once again, the, for security reasons, the computer that counts
I didn't finish my question, please. With all this technology on site, first, I wanted to ask, what are we paying to rent that for today? And also, can't we just take a screenshot and put it up? It would still be disconnected and safe, but can't we just take a screenshot so that everybody can see the vote counts?
I'm, I'm telling everybody verbally what the vote is, and, and, and I don't think that we need to do anything else. Things are complicated enough here today, and if there's somebody who doesn't believe what I'm saying, you're welcome to question me, and I'll turn the computer around so you can see it. I assume people elected me because they thought I was honest, and I guarantee I will tell you exactly what it says on the screen here. At microphone D, please.
Madam Moderator, my name's Jamie Holmes, M Moore Road. I support this article, or these articles. As a lifelong resident, I'm passionate about our town, as I know everyone else who made it here today is. My husband and I chose to start a family and raise it here in Westford because of the special place I have known it to be. I know Westford to be a special place, not because of its exciting nightlife, but because of the people that make it up, especially the teachers, school staff, like guidance counselors, deans, and principals, and the public safety officers I've interacted with in the last 40-ish years. I'd argue these jobs are the most important influential jobs in our world. As children and adults, we look to them for direction. As society has evolved, good, bad, or indifferent, so have their jobs. Their job description is so much more than it was even 10 years ago. We need them more than ever and look to them more than ever to help mold our youth and create the next generation of adults that will be running not only this town, but this country. As the job description grows and the stresses of the job increase, there are not as many people looking to join these professions that are crucial to our growth. If we choose to underfund these professions, retaining quality employees will be an issue, but attracting new employees will be an even bigger one. I ask for everyone to consider how crucial these professions have been in their lives and/or their children's lives before casting a no vote. Throughout the last several months of reading town information, attending meetings, and speaking with town officials, I have realized that while there are things I may have done differently, there was no gross negligence or management, mismanagement. Compromise and reductions have been made and will continue to be made even with this override. I have personally watched this work get done.
I am going to ask you to wrap up. I'm gonna ask you to wrap up. You're at your two minutes.
Is it perfect? It is not. Are there things I would personally change? There are. However, I'm aware that everyone in this room has a different opinion of what they would change. I'm willing to fund this override in its entirety to preserve not only what's important to me, but important to my friends and neighbors as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone B, please.
Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Raymond Xie, number 2, Chu Binwei. I'm speaking against the override. Basically, the point I want to mention is that it's a public trust issue, all right? So currently, we amassed a 4.2 million deficit, right? How did we get here? The override will permanently increase the tax burden on the average home in Westford by $746. And how did we get here? We need to look at the methodology and the way we spend money. Like, two years ago, when the town was talking about replacing HVAC for Cameron Center, I'm all for that. But if you spend $2 million to do that, and you said on the stage, cost is not your consideration at all, you somehow lost credibility in average voters in this town, at least in my heart. I think this is a unique time for town management to restore that credibility, to take the fiscal responsibility seriously. I would urge people to vote no. Thank you.
Kristin, did you want to answer the "how did we get here" question? Kristin Last, Town Manager.
Thank you for the question. The Budget Task Force studied throughout the course of May through October of how the town got here. And as I alluded to in my presentation, we're seeing unprecedented cost increases in our contracts due to inflation and those pressures, as well as other outside factors. So I do urge those who have not read the Budget Task Force report to go through that. All of those budget challenges are detailed there, as well as all of the efficiencies and revenue that we seek to pursue in the future are detailed in that report. Thank you.
Thank you. At microphone C?
Kathy Lynch on Rush Road. Quickly, I would like all the parents who are sitting here to think about what kind of economy they are leaving their children, the next generation, when they become adults. How will the children afford a home or place of their own? And how about elderly parents, retired and living on fixed incomes? Will they be able to stay in Westford with property taxes growing exponentially? We need a government that comes up with cost-saving solutions instead of automatically going to the taxpayer to pay for bloated budgets. I urge a no vote on override articles 1, 2, and 3, and a yes on 4.
Thank you. At the, at microphone D?
Yep. Good morning, neighbors. My name is Kate McKinnon of 8 Sherlock Lane. I come to this meeting to bring my insight as a licensed school counselor who previously worked in the Westford Public Schools, but now I work in another nearby town. I am also a mom of two rambunctious kiddos. They are very busy. I'm sure a lot of your kids are too. As a school counselor, I see firsthand the amazing work reading and math interventionists do on a daily basis. They not only teach students to read and do math, but also nurtures their confidence and supports them as they persevere through difficult tasks. There is evidence that when students feel confident with the work they are asked to learn, they are significantly lower numbers of disruptive behaviors and dysregulation in the classroom. Without interventionists supporting students and teachers, there would be an increase in special education referrals, which would potentially lead to an IEP and ultimately cost the district more money to give students the support they require each school year. In my professional opinion, removing interventionists from a school in 2024 would be penny wise but pound foolish, since it would ultimately cost the district and the town more money in the long run when those children are referred to special education. I would strongly encourage everyone to vote yes for this override, not only because it is the right thing to do from a child development perspective, but also because this will ultimately cost you, the taxpayers, significantly more if the district is forced to eliminate the wonderful interventionists that Westford employs. Thank you so much, and be kind.
Thank you. Is there someone at the microphone on my left? Okay, please.
I, I, I hear a lot of people talking about the school system in Westford.
I need you to name and address first, please.
Philip Arnhem, 17 Kersey Circle.
Thank you.
I hear a lot of people talking about the school system in Westford, and I think the kids do deserve the number one school system in Westford. However, Westford's not the number one school system in, in the state. Hopkinton is. Hopkinton has five schools. Westford has nine. All that come with significant overhead staff and costs, operating costs. I wanted to know if the town has ever done a utilization study of the schools. It seems to make sense. Hopkinton is doing it for less money, with 4,100 students, not a significant amount less than Westford. And the town is very comparable.
Can we get, can we get an answer to that question, please?
You're right, we do have nine schools. We also have a similar enrollment to Hopkinton. Those are true. We do have a declining enrollment that, and adjustments have been made along the way. In fact, since FY17, we've reduced 37 classroom teachers to adjust for those sections of students going through. And there has been staff that have been added, and the spaces are being used in different ways to, to accommodate the changing student population. The number of high-need students in our district have, has almost doubled in the last 10 years. So this class, what previously would have been a classroom in 2014 could be being used for intervention, special education. We have classrooms for medically fragile, deaf and hard of hearing, social and emotional inclusive classrooms. School has changed from rows of desks that may have been years ago, and the spaces are being used as, to, to meet the needs of the students in front of us.
Yes, but I hear Westford, is this on? I hear...
Sorry, you need, you need to be closer to the microphone and address your question to me, please.
I hear Westford talking about cutting teachers and special education teachers. Hopkinton is increasing their teachers and doing it for less without a override.
First of all, I, I will just say, we, oh, can I answer the question? Thank you. Sorry. I don't think that we can necessarily debate the differences between Westford and Hopkinton. They are two different communities. While they're, the school system and the demographics of the students are similar, the buildings themselves are also very different. So as you're talking about their five schools versus our nine schools, as we have looked at all of our buildings, and we have looked to see if we would be able to redistrict and look to see if we'd be able to utilize the spaces differently, what Ms. Young was just talking about, the spaces that we are using right now, we are using appropriately. We've had additional groups work with us to look at that, and that's part of our 10-year plan as well, too, as we're looking at our facilities. I can't speak to the Hopkinton contract or what they're doing for their, their staff or not. We are not reducing special education teachers in Westford. That's not part of, of any of the reductions that we've identified. So that's just different information.
Yeah, but what I'm asking...
No, no, I think we're gonna have to stop it there. I don't want to have a dialogue back and forth. There are too many people at the microphone. At microphone B?
Peter Sina, 13 Sawatford Road. Please forgive my ignorance, just a simple question. I do not understand the term debt exclusion. Could I get an explanation? And an example would be useful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Dan O'Donnell, Finance Director.
Sure. So a debt exclusion is when we, when we go to bond for a project, we can either have that within the levy limit, which means the existing tax base, or we can raise taxes to pay for it. Typically, for larger projects such as the Blanchard roof in the library, the town has approved debt exclusions. So that amount for the debt payment is then allocated on the tax base each year, and it goes away after we pay off the bond for that. So it's just an added tax to pay for a specific project.
Does that answer your question? Great. Microphone C?
Hi, Christina Palta, 11 Building Over Drive. I want to tell you why I'm voting yes for the override. I'm a parent of two WA students, but I'm also a math interventionist dad abit. But this isn't about my job. I want to make sure everyone leaning no understands the service they are eliminating for K through A students. Reading and math intervention is a service available to all students who need additional support based on detailed screening and evaluation process. It's not a special education service. If you don't have a child recommended for intervention, you might not also realize that your child is also benefiting from this program. Because of intervention, your child's teacher has a smaller class where they can check in on students like yours, or encourage them to do something a bit more challenging. We call this block win, which stands for what I need. Without intervention, will your student get what they need? Will teachers be able to give all students the attention they deserve when they lose not only their inventiveness, but their class size increases? This year, Westford interventionists have seen 521 students, and 110 of those have already rejoined their classmates by reaching grade-level expectations. That's how we know intervention works. Please vote yes for articles 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you. Microphone D? Is there someone there? Okay, yes.
Megan O'Connell, 44 South Chelmsford Road. First, let me say that I have five kids still in the school district here. So the quality of the schools is extremely important to me. At the same time, I see a lot of people having to pick one side or the other. And I would submit, Madam Moderator, that there's a way to move forward and satisfy both sides. If we look in 2005, this town meeting considered a $3 million override, primarily for the schools. That override failed. Within days, the Finance Committee voted to restore that budget. Today, we're looking at a difference of $2.5 million in the school budget between the override budget and the non-override budget, $2.5 million. The Finance Committee just issued a report last month that shows we will end FY25 with $3 million plus in excess stabilization free cash. That's above the 5% recommended minimum to maintain our AAA bond rating. What I would submit to the town meeting is that we can reject this override, tap into that stabilization free cash, which is separate from the school stabilization fund that was discussed earlier, fully fund the schools for one year, and buy this town time to work on real cost savings. So I urge everyone to vote no on articles 1, 2, and 3, yes on 4. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan O'Donnell, Finance Director.
So in that strategy, we'd be using our reserves to fund one-time expenditures in FY25. So in FY25, we have a $4.2 million deficit. If we use a large portion of reserves for that, then we still have a $3.9 million deficit in FY26. So in total, 8.1 million. So not only if we apply reserves in FY25, will we have less to work with in FY26, which is dangerous, then we're still have that fiscal cliff of 8.1 million. So it's not a good short-term solution to actually do that. We are, we do issue bonds as a town, and as such, we do have a bond rating. Steve, do you want to put up slide 37? So this used to be a practice of the town many years ago, where we used to apply free cash to help balance the, the budget, and the rating agencies did not like that. They saw that as a weakness for us. So back in 2014-ish, we're gonna, right here, up here, we stopped that practice, and we managed to have the budget, the revenues, match what was in the expense budget. So since that time, we have been a AAA community. We got upgraded immediately once we did that. If we go back the other way, we will most likely be downgraded, I don't know, one, maybe two steps. And on those debt exclusions I was just talking about, the interest costs will go up. So it will cost us more in the long term if we decide to deplete our reserves. So I caution you to do so. Thank you.
Just also wanted to add that the Budget Task Force report reviewed, and even though we would, if we went through all of the revenue we could gain and all of the efficiencies, that would still not be enough to cover our expenses for fiscal '25.
Okay, at microphone A. Is there somebody there? Yeah.
There is.
Okay.
Hi.
If you folks behind microphone A that aren't waiting in line can just move to the side so I can tell who's waiting in line and who's not, I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
There are a few in microphone A. Sorry about that. Hi, there. Evan Moore, 6 Crown Road. It's really cool to get to talk in front of this town. This is a historic crowd, a historic town meeting, of course. I'm voting yes, but who cares? What's my wife voting? She can't make it. She's watching the kids. There are a lot of scenarios where people might relate to this. You know, market basket run, car wouldn't start, three-year-old threw a tantrum before you could get out the door. Whatever it may be, those folks should have a voice. You know, we're here...
Happy to talk to you about the vagaries of town meeting at another time, but do you have something to add to this particular discussion about the override?
Sure. I'd mostly just encourage folks to note that to shoot this down here at town meeting would deny the vote of those that can vote on this at the ballot in the coming weeks. I think that that's really important, and I hope that everybody keeps that in mind. And it's a little discouraging when we see motions to shut this down entirely because you're denying a whole lot of voices. This town's really big. So I would encourage folks to keep that in mind. That's all. I just wanted to make that known. Thanks.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to cut you off about that important issue. I'm happy to talk to you about that offline. At microphone B?
Good morning. My name is John Amato, 88 Chamberlain Road. I have a, kind of a comment, and then I want to ask a question, I guess. I want to talk about saving our sustainable values. And this is important, all right? It's important. A Westford resident that's of a post, they were concerned about what was going on in Westford with the vote, the override. This person typed away, "I'm gonna vote yes." And he wanted to vote yes because of the importance of our school system and the good results. And that's what she was voting yes on. And I think that's a good thing. They continue to discuss why they wanted Westford, and how they wanted the kids to grow up here, and it's a perfect place, and people move here. It's a great place, right? Anybody have a bad word to say about Westford? I hope not. Okay, all right. And this is how they finished, and this is what made me very upset. They finished saying, "If you can't afford the increase, you should move out and let someone who can afford the increase move in." That was someone in our town. Someone in our town says, "I don't care about the elderly who have no income. I don't care about the people who've lived here for 15 generations," or whatever it is. You may have to move out because this person was worried about their education. I'm worried about my education. I put two kids through Westford schools. And along the way, many of our friends put their children, and we put our children, through tutors, to the tutor two days a week, month after month, year after year, to get the education that they weren't getting in Westford. So when you look at the quality education we have in Westford, the parents are paying extra money to put them through school while they're in school. So keep that in mind, and while you're at it...
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up. You're at your two minutes.
She had eight minutes.
No one's had eight minutes. There's a clock right there. I'm watching.
She read a book.
Okay, I need you to wrap up.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap up. So you should take into consideration the fact that half the population in this town can't afford this override. And so you don't make fun of them, don't think they're bad, don't think they're picking on your kid, and that your kid is gonna be dead because someone made a bad choice. on your kid, and that your kid is going to be dead because someone made a bad choice. Respect the people in town, respect your neighbor, and don't be mean. Thank you.
Thank you. At microphone C.
Good morning, Madam Moderator. I am Jennifer Cataldo, 121 Depple Street. I've lived in Westford for 30 years, and all three of my children went through the Westford school system. I'm currently one of the STEM curriculum coordinators. I'm speaking in support of Articles 1, 2, and 3 specifically for the 26 elementary interventionists, who as it stands will all be cut if there's no override. Interventionists work with children for either reading or math. It is a regular education service, and its goal is to fill gaps in learning. They see students for 30 minutes a day in small groups. Intervention happens in grades 3 through 5, and all students benefit from this extra instruction during the wind block. The rest of the students are benefiting as well. They are able to come to tailored small group instruction with their teacher. Without an override, these students will not get any instruction for any below-grade-level gaps, and they will more likely stay below grade level. Westford has had interventionists for decades. All children get what they need because of the 26 interventionists who work in tandem with classroom teachers. Intervention is the foundation of Westford's excellence. I'm extremely worried about the impact of removing this invaluable foundational stone. I fear it will crumble the structure of our elementary educational model. An interventionist job is not on the teacher's salary scale. It's an hourly position, and most only earn about $24,000 a year. We have a highly educated group of interventionists. 80% of the interventionists are certified teachers, and over half of those have master's degrees. Over 85% of interventionists have been working in education for 10-plus years. I'm going to skip down because I realize my time is up.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you to wrap up.
Yes. Well, once these positions go, we will never have these highly qualified staff again, and approximately 400-plus elementary students will no longer receive intervention. It's a what-I-need block. Please don't take away from the youngest students of Westford what they need. Please vote yes for Articles 1, 2, and 3.
Okay. At microphone D. And can we please try to add new material and not repeat what's been said before? So think in terms of the comments you've already heard, and please try to add new material.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is William Stare, 20 Boston Road. A gentleman earlier mentioned being respectful to all of our neighbors, and I would encourage everyone to vote no, I mean, vote yes, out of respect for everyone to be able to vote, regardless of how you feel about this issue. This is not a vote to say yes or no. This is a vote to allow a vote.
No, no, we've already had that vote.
Okay. Then my question for you would be, what is Article 3 in the sense that if it's voted no, what is the immediate impact on 2025, and can it be brought up for a vote to address future years? Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. I'm going to ask that that question be deferred until we get to Article 3.
I meant the third point of Article 1, maybe?
Article 1 is the budget.
1, 2, and there's four parts to it, right?
So there are four articles. We're right now mainly discussing Article 1. There is some integration between Articles 1, 2, and 3.
Well, the reason it's relevant, you said they have to.
Let me have the town manager answer that question briefly, just so you understand. And you and others in the room, who I'm sure have the same question, will understand what's going on.
Steve, if you could please bring up Slide 7. So again, I just want to reiterate that Article 1 allocates $4.2 million of the override to fund the fiscal '25 budget. Article 2 establishes an override stabilization fund. And then Article 3 allocates $2.6 million of the $6.8 million override ask to the stabilization account. You'll see on the ballot on May 7th that there are two questions. One, to fund $4.2 million. That would be just for fiscal '25. And one for $2.6 million for the stabilization account that would be used in fiscal '26 and beyond.
So the answer is it would have an immediate effect, right?
Sorry.
So the answer is that Article 3 also affects the 2025 budget?
No, that's not quite right, I don't think. Go ahead.
Article 3 does not affect the 2025 budget. It affects fiscal '26 and beyond. But if we do not approve Article 3 at the town meeting and at the ballot, we likely would be back before another override or additional cuts in fiscal '26.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to take one or two more people at each microphone, and then move to our line-by-line discussion, so that we can move this along. So at microphone A.
Megan Akroth, 8 Timberly Lane. We've heard a lot about the schools, but I just want to remind people that this is to fund our entire town. There are significant decreases to public safety, our library, town services, that impact everybody, to the point of the woman who said she was a Realtor and wanted to counter the argument that your home value is reflective of this. Acton is about to vote on a very large override, which, incidentally, all of their town boards unanimously supported because it is necessary. And their tax rate is, I believe, at least 3% higher than Westford's currently. It doesn't seem to be deterring people from moving there. So my point in saying that is that a town budget is a reflection of what a town values. And when you are looking to buy your home, you are putting your money towards your choice of what you value as a resident. I am a resident here. I'm a parent of two students at WA, and I'm also a 4th grade teacher at Abbott. I'm the low man on the totem pole, so my position will likely be gone, but I've loved the years I've been able to teach here in Westford. In doing so, I have had classes where nearly or just over 50% of my students access support services outside of special education. Tiered support in reading and math to get them where they need to be to succeed. I currently have a class of 20. That may sound small. Some of our other schools have larger classes because of the size of their classrooms. I have a relatively small class. But I will tell you, I teach fractions as a 4th grade teacher. 1/20 of my time is a lot more than 1/30 of my time. Think about that. School class sizes, all the way from kindergarten to the high school, impact every single student, from a high-achieving, don't need a lot of help, AP, all A student.
I need you to wrap up.
Down to the bottom. I will wrap it up. We focused a lot at the younger grades. I just want to remind people, just a few short years ago, we had paid kindergarten. Parents had to pay for access to full-day kindergarten, not half-day, full-day. It costs a lot more than your tax increase will cost. Kindergarten's now paid for by the town. Please vote yes on 1, 2, and 3. Our landscape of our schools will change forever and not be repaired.
Thank you. Microphone B.
Steve Briery, 16 Phillips Drive. I have heard the argument made, "Well, I don't have kids in the school system. Why should I have to support and pay for this?" Everyone on this field has had their education partially paid for by strangers. What your parents paid for either public education in Westford, some other town, or private school, was not covered by the taxes they paid. The cost was not covered. Other people who didn't have kids in the school system, or donors to a private school, helped pay for it. My children graduated from the academy over 20 years ago. The taxes my wife and I paid did not cover the cost of their education, but other taxpayers did, because it's what a community does. Now, we have no way to pay them back directly, but what we can do is pay forward. It's only fair that we benefited from the civic sense of obligation of the taxpayers of this town 20, 30 years ago to fund a good school system. So it's incumbent upon us, as a matter of fairness, to provide that same level of funding, even though we have no more kids in the school system, to the next generation going forward. So this is respecting the entire town, respecting the generations to come, as well as the residents of the town now. So please vote in favor of Articles 1, 2, and 3.
Thank you. Microphone C.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Emily Zimmerman Gilstrap, 17 Oak Road. I'm here to share what Westford has done for my family. I've lived in Westford for six years with my children, who are four and eight. Two years ago, our lives blew up, leaving me as a single mom with a single income and a Westford mortgage. Westford police literally showed up at our door and made us safe. The school guidance counselor, excuse me, kept an eye on my child, and school was a safe haven for him. The library was a place we could go to get out of the house on a gloomy day without spending money. The town social worker was able to put me in touch with resources and organizations that supported us during those first few scary months to keep things normal for my children and ensure that we could stay in our home. Standing on the edge of Navnasset Pond is where I looked out over those peaceful waters and promised myself that I would move heaven and earth to keep us here. Westford showed up for us. Today, two years later, my children are thriving. My daughter is so excited to go to kindergarten where her brother went. I want her to have the same wonderful experience he did. We are still in economic recovery, so the override has a significant impact on our ability to make ends meet. So I genuinely feel for those who are hurt by the increase. But Westford, you mean everything to me, so I will be showing up for you today by voting yes on the override. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone D.
Peter Protante, 27 Buckboard Drive. Quick question. What's the difference in increase between Article 1 and Article 4 to our taxes? Thank you.
Dan? Well. So Article 1 is increasing the tax base by 4.2 million. Article 2 is increasing by 2.6 million. So in total, it's 6.8 million.
No, I meant to us, like our tax, our tax bill. What's the, there was an average increase, someone said 742, or whatever it was?
Yeah, it's right around $750-ish dollars for the median house assessed at $756,000.
But that's for Article 1. What's it for Article 4?
4 is the regular budget.
So for Article 4, the tax levy grows by 2.5% plus any growth. I can't, I don't know what your houses were, so it's $750 less than it would have been.
Article 1 is about 250. I don't understand. They're both increasing, if you're, there's going to be a 2.5% increase for Article 4. So what would that be compared to the 740 number?
So Article 4 is about a 1/3 of that override increase, so you're talking maybe $375, somewhere in that ballpark, where if Article 1, 2, and 3 is about $750.
370, what was it again?
About 375. It's like a 2/3, 1/3 split.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. I would like to move to the line-by-line itemization of the budget, because we're not terminating discussion, but we're going to get more specific. And I think we've had a good bit of discussion. So let's move to the Article 1 budget. And the way we're going to do this is that I will read through the line items in the budget, one by one. If you have a question about a specific line item, you'll say "hold." And please say it loudly. Make sure somebody gets your attention, whether it's me, or Mr. Alvin in the back, or somebody else up here, if you have a "hold."
I'm just going to yell "hold" on everything, since you don't want to hear us.
That is your prerogative.
It is.
Yep. Okay. All right. So, sir, do you have a question you want to ask? Is that, is there frustration there because you didn't get to the microphone?
Yeah, I waited quite a long time, and then you arbitrarily cut it off.
All right, sir. Let's hear your question.
Okay. I think it's just more information.
Okay.
How did we get here, someone asked? It's really simple. The school committee used COVID funds.
Excuse me, one moment. What? Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
My name is Doug Barnes, 4 Black Bear Lane. But the school committee used COVID funds and paid for full-day kindergarten at a cost of $1 million without authorization of this body. They used COVID funds. They did not require coming before this body. That's part of the cost of the school. They also, in the last budgeting round, the town told all of the employees they could only have 2% increases in their allocation, 222, so a 6% increase over three years. The school committee gave the teachers 10%. When you look at that, you say $1 million here and $2.5 million for the 4% extra. There's your override people for the schools. So this is a man-made issue by not managing the funds and not coming before this body in terms of presenting things. We want full-day kindergarten? Let us vote on it. But you're saying, "Oh, it's already in there, so we don't need to vote on it." That's wrong. It was not. It was used with COVID money. The police cuts and everything that we're doing, they only got 2% raises. I don't understand why they're being thrown in. Police, fire, and everybody else is thrown into this mix. They're not the budget buster. What I do believe is we should vote down Article 1, and I also believe we should vote down Article 4, because Article 4 does not take into account the realities of the inflationary cost to the town, which you are not giving us an opportunity to vote on. Yes, trash collection and a whole bunch of sundry of other things that the town cannot control need to be funded by an override. So you give us, beat the town to death by taxes, or beat the town to death by punishing the school system. And there is a middle ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Are folks at the microphone willing to wait with their questions for when we go through the one by one? Is there anybody else at the microphone that feels like they must ask their question or make their comment now? All right. Come up. Thank you to the rest of you for being patient.
Cheryl McGrath, 3 Jarvis Way. And Madam Speaker, you're going to be very happy, because I'm going to make this short and sweet.
We like that.
We are all cheering yay to the override. Yippee, higher taxes. I don't get it, especially in the climate we're living, with everything in our lives costing more. I repeat, why again are we cheering yay for more taxes? We pay enough. I say nay. Vote no, 1, 2, and 3. Not sure yet about 4, maybe a yes on that. I have two WA alumnus. The town is wonderful, but I really don't want to pay any more taxes. Entering a retirement, I'll probably end up selling my house, which people are saying, "Yay, if you don't like it, get out." So maybe I will. Thank you.
All right. Now, we'll move to the, oh, okay. Yes?
Donna Chadwick, 9 Sawmill Drive. I have a different perspective. In 1972, my husband and I moved here scared to death that we could not afford our $42,000 new home. We did, though, and even though we could not have children, we gladly paid our taxes to fund everything that our new hometown needed. 52 years later, I've been widowed for 20 years and still willingly wish for the greater community to receive my tax money, even though I'm a low-income senior and a clinician licensed in three specialties. I understand things, in my opinion, from multiple levels. As a citizen, I can't micromanage the town. I'm looking macro at the greater good for the community. So as in the '70s, as hard as it will be for me, for the greater good, I'm willing to pay for the override.
Thank you. I'm gonna take the four people that were standing at the microphone since we took those other people, okay? At microphone C. Nancy?
Thank you. My name is Nancy Cook, 25 North Main, and I was going to say, everything in my private life, I do collecting for people in need in this town. But I have a legit question on the town side. We're already down first responders by retirement, attrition, injuries. Is the five or more that you're talking about cutting in addition to that? I mean, we're talking closing fire stations? Can we get an answer?
We'll get you an answer to that.
Thank you.
So right now, in the fiscal '24 budget, we have 12 dispatchers in that, we do not have 12 dispatchers in the seat, so we would not be laying off a dispatcher. In the fire department, we would be waiting for retirements to occur. There would not be layoffs, but we would not be backfilling those. And similarly, in the police department, there are several vacancies right now that we would not be backfilling those.
So we will have a shortage. There will be closing stations.
Yes. We do anticipate that Rogers Fire Station would be closed for periods of time due to staffing capacity.
And longer response times.
And longer response time, yes.
Thank you.
Sir, at this microphone.
So, so I'm Jayden Tiano.
Oh, no, no, sorry. Wrong microphone. At microphone B.
James Shuley, 19 Flushing Pond Road. Madam Moderator, not taking a position, but it'd be helpful to get some information in terms of how we got to this point on a multi-year basis. So we have property taxes that are a solid base and grow gradually. And then the COVID stimulus funds, the ARPA funds, the town got 7.4 million. And I'm curious how many of the 50 positions identified for the school department and the nine for public safety were initiated with those one-time funds, not the regular tax basis?
We'll get you an answer to that.
On the town side, none of the permanent positions currently in the fiscal '24 budget are planned to be, or were ARPA-funded.
The question...
Do we have an answer on the school? Do you wanna get the answer on the school side also?
None of the 50.4 reductions are, were funded by grants either.
Not grants, ARPA.
I'm sorry. Yes, ARPA funds, ESAR funds, all of them, none.
Huh, that's puzzling, because I've seen, and I reviewed these last night, Westford CAT articles that indicated they were very school, math, every call term, and also a fire, another in '22, I think, a fire position that came out of ARPA. Anyway, that's the way it was reported. Are you saying that the CAT report was inaccurate?
If that's what it said, we didn't use one-time funds for any salaried positions.
All right, I think, I think the question's been answered.
Okay, I'm not taking anybody else at that microphone. At this microphone, sir, were you in line the whole time?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So I'm Jayden Tiano of 29 Birch Road, and I'm here to ask that, if Article 2, the over, okay, if the override fund doesn't pass, then will we be seeing budget cuts in areas other than school?
We'll get you an answer to that.
If the override does not pass, as I presented in my earlier slides, there will be reductions of over nine full-time employees on the town side and other service reductions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Judy?
Thank you. Judy Culver, Stone Ridge Road. My husband and I moved to Westford over 50 years ago, and we were looking for a place, this is echoing, okay, looking for a place to raise a family, and we knew Westford was a nice town, someplace on 495. But he knew that Kimball's was also in Westford. So we came here looking, and we bought a house. We spent $20,000 to buy a six-room house, and that was a long time ago. Over the years, we raised three children, they all graduated here. Eventually, we sold the house, which had increased 10 times in value, which we thought was criminal, but it did. And we moved on. In the same time, the town grew from about 7, no, 10,000 people to 25,000. In the same time, existing services in 1970 to then are now, in town services, we have added a library expansion, trash and recycling is now being picked up, schools were built and staffed as needed. The police moved out of a tiny corner of Town Hall into their own building. The two fire stations were built, the technical infrastructure for the whole town is installed, and all of this was done with operational funds that were raised by property taxes. There were a couple of overrides along the way, and then we discovered a new way to raise money for the town. It's called fees. Everyone here pays fees for virtually everything you do in town except public service. But now you pay fees for school activities, recreation activities, there's more, there's a lot. I know that if I had kids in school today, I could not afford to pay for sports teams, busing, and other extra activities that the kids take part in. I don't know how people do that today, but they do. So we go on, and one of the things I've been reading on the website is the disgruntlement that people are having with a lot of things, the way things are being done. We're either not looking in the right places for the money, we're inefficient, we're not looking under the right stones, or people are just incompetent who are putting things together. I don't see that.
Judy, I need to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, I'm wrapping up. I don't see inefficiencies. I see a fire and safety department that works very well for us. I see a school system that has graduated hundreds of our children, who have all gone on to successful careers and become good citizens. We are also one of the best public high schools in the state and probably the country, and one of the best technical high schools also in the state. We're very proud to live here and...
Judy, I'm sorry, I need to ask you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. Just listen to me, I was just giving you an overview of the past. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to the line-by-line discussion of the budget. So if you look in, if you look in your motions booklet... Who's, what's, what am I waiting for? I don't see anybody. Okay, if you look in your motions booklet, you'll see that each department or category of our town government is listed, followed horizontally across the page with five columns. The numbers we'll be working with are the bolded totals in the third column labeled "Fiscal 2025 Override." You can see it up on the screen as well. These are the numbers you'll be asked to vote on in this article. I'll read through the list of departments, along with the totals for each, and if you have a question or comment on any of them, please say "hold," and we'll stop and discuss that before proceeding. We've had a lot of discussion on the override issue, so please, at this point, try to limit your questions to specific line items. After we go through all the line items and get all your questions answered, we'll vote on the override budget as a whole. Before we go to page 4, you can take a look at page 3 of your motions booklet. There you'll see 11 appropriations in this budget, which are listed separately from the rest of the budget, because they're being appropriated from sources other than this year's tax dollars. I'll read through those items first. Please say "hold" if you have a question on any particular item. Everybody ready? For the general fund, $100,000 to be appropriated from overlay surplus. For community preservation, $1,121,028 to be appropriated from Community Preservation Fund fiscal 2025 revenue. For the town revolving funds, $3,000 from the senior citizen fitness room revolving 53E and 1/2. For the town revolving funds, $19,197 from Immunization and Clinical Revolving Fund 53E and 1/2. For the town revolving funds, $7,350 from the East Boston Camps Maintenance revolving 53E and 1/2. For the town revolving funds, $13,000 from the lease of town buildings, 65 and 73 Main Street and 170 Plain Road revolving 53E and 1/2. For the water enterprise fund, $4,820,758 from Water Enterprise revenue and $200,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings. For the recreation enterprise fund, $958,300 from Recreation Enterprise revenue, $200,000 from Recreation Enterprise retained earnings, and $35,927 to be raised and appropriated. For the ambulance enterprise fund, $850,000 from Ambulance Enterprise revenue, $50,000 from Ambulance Enterprise retained earnings, and $786,441 to be raised and appropriated. For the stormwater enterprise fund, $823,264 from Stormwater Enterprise revenue and $600,000 to be raised and appropriated. For the expendable trust, $10,000 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Expendable Trust. Seeing no questions or holds on those items, we'll move to page 4 and start with general government. So again, if you have a hold on any of these items, please speak out, and we'll get your question answered. Under general government, for the select board, $21,410. Town manager, $658,374. Finance committee, $102,524. Finance department, $157,135. 100, did I read the number wrong? Is that what this? Steve, you should be on the first page that has general government at the top. I'm sorry, I can't quite see it from here. What's the number on the left? 200, yeah, you need to be on the page before that, or a couple pages before that. No, but he does, he's not coordinated with what I'm saying. He's got a slide up there that's different than what I'm saying. Oh, that's happening. Yeah, now he's, he's having trouble. Bear with us a minute. I appreciate everybody's patience. This is a different meeting than we've ever had before, so it's really helpful for people to be patient and bear with us as we deal with the few inevitable bumps. Okay, we've made some sort of adjustment, and he's gonna scroll through as I'm going through. Do people want me to start over? Okay. You can't, yeah, I know. We're trying, we're trying. They heard you. At least the sun came out again. I was freezing up here. Are there more? Yeah, there, there aren't enough. If you have a green handout, you've got the numbers that I'm going through. And if someone sitting next to you doesn't have a green handout, maybe you can share.
Excuse me, moderator?
Yes?
Can you please expand for us what personal services is?
Oh, if you have a question, please.
I, I, did I not hear you? Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. What, I don't know, is this salaries we're talking about?
Try to look on with somebody next to you. I don't want you to sit here doing nothing and wasting your time. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back to finance department, which is number 132. Town accountant, $383,511. Board of assessors, $358,463. Was that a sneeze or a hold?
It was a sneeze.
Okay, just checking. Treasurer-collector, $340,956. Legal services, $140,500. Human resources, $667,293. Technology, $132,709. Town clerk, $352,153. Let's go back, I have two holds on that page, one under town manager and one under human resources. Can the person who has the question under the town manager line please stand, please come to the microphone? Do you see anybody? Did someone, did someone have a hold for the town manager item?
Okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Wayne Farnolds, 3 Blue Brook Lane. A question on the personnel services. What's the increase and what services that town manager's office providing for that increase of $112,000?
Currently, the sustainability coordinator and the community wellness coordinator are partially funded by ARPA, and those are included in the town manager's budget.
Will the lady that had the question about personnel services come to the microphone? Oh, there you are, okay. Can you ask your question, please?
Hello, good afternoon. I did have a question.
I need your name and address, please.
Jan, Topower Road in Westford. I'd like to just have you expand a little bit, personnel services. Why aren't we just saying out loud that those are salaries we're paying, correct? Why are we calling it?
They are salaries, they are salaries.
Okay, why aren't we just putting that? But we're talking about transparency. And then I did have a concern or a question for an explanation about compensation reserve.
Yeah. Dan, can you explain compensation reserve? Thank you for your question.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the Compensation Reserve in the HR Budget, the 152 Budget, that's what we use for unsettled contracts. We have to allocate a certain amount so we can bargain in good faith with those unions and then allocate the funds from there once those contracts are settled.
Okay, can the-
That reserve account is also used for merit increases if we can authorize those merit increases.
Can the person who had the Human Resources question come up to the microphone? Was that the same question?
So, Madam Moderator, here at C.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark Hodapp, four Village View. So the question was, 67% increases on Human Resources. It's in various places, but what's the underlying driver beyond contract?
The underlying driver is that we are to be negotiating the fire union contract for fiscal '25.
So, Madam Moderator, this is where we've allocated that to be held?
To be held, did you say?
Yeah, for that, that purpose, budgetary.
I'm not sure I understand, but I'm gonna-
We reserve money in this account for those negotiations.
Got it.
I see. Sorry, I missed it. All right. Having answered those questions.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Doug Burns, four Black Bear Lane. I had to put a hold on the Town Manager position as well.
Oh, okay.
And I'm, I have a query that, one thing that I had heard is that in the Town Manager's office, we were going to go from Town Manager and Assistant to where we would have two assistants in the office. Is that true?
We'll get that question answered.
It is true that now there are two Assistant Town Managers in the Town Manager's office. One is Assistant Town Manager for Strategic Operations that replaced a former employee. The other is Assistant Town Manager for Land Use and Economic Development, and that position will not be backfilled from the Land Use Director. So it is a budget-neutral change.
Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, it does. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, let's move on to the next page. I'm at line 170 on page five. Permitting Department, $353,169. Conservation Commission, $112,374. Planning Board, $125,841. Zoning Board of Appeals, $2,595. Town Hall Maintenance, $115,825. Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance, $268,644. Under Public Safety, Police Department, $6,652,110. Public Safety Communications, $966,955. Fire Department, $4,506,267. Building Department.
Excuse me? I asked for a hold?
Yeah, for the Fire Department, right? Yeah, I'll come back to your question with the hold on the Fire Department, okay? Building Department, $445,454. Sealer of Weights and Measures, $16,500. Emergency Management, $12,344. Animal Control, $46,645. Tree Warden, $43,122. Let's stop there for a moment and go back to the hold on the Fire Department. The person with that hold, please, yes, sir?
Testing? Okay, thank you. Devin Cody at Groton Road. I just had a question in general for, for the Public Safety Budget. If the override is not approved, has the town considered the creation of volunteer organizations to supplement the public safety services, like a volunteer firefighting force or neighborhood watches, et cetera? While I know those will still cost money, they'll be cheaper.
Yeah, we're gonna get your, an answer to that question. We have the chief's, yeah, great, thank you. So you've got Fire Chief Mark Chambers and, no. Fire Chief Joe Targ and Police Chief Mark Chambers. Don't hold it against me.
We used to have a call department. Our last member retired this year. It's very hard and difficult to get people for the amount of training they need, the certifications, fire academy, the dedication and time that they have to go to, to put in for this, and plus the insurance, the volunteer insurance if they get hurt. So with all those reasons, we, we've tried to advertise them past for call members and we've got none once they find out what is required of them.
So I'm not sure if everybody is familiar, but over the past several years, the police departments across this Commonwealth have been scrutinized in how they're staffing a lot of their different endeavors. And with that, the part-time reserve officer program as well as auxiliary really requires a lot of additional training that would be transferred into the cost of the actual individual. We do not have any reserve or auxiliary officers here in Westford. The cost of training itself would pretty much equate to almost a full-time position. So for that reason, we do not. Neighborhood watches, I would encourage anybody that's interested to report things, please, 911 for an emergency or the business line to report anything they observe that might be suspicious. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Hello, folks out in the bleachers? Can you kind of keep it down there? I can't hear you from here, but I guess the people in the back are having a hard time hearing what's going on up here because of the noise in the bleachers. Not accusing anybody specifically, but just try to keep it down. Okay.
I have a, over here, hello? I'm at a mic.
Which mic are you at? Okay.
Over here, C.
Yes, sir?
I have Peter Portante at 27 Buckwood Drive. I'm curious about what the transfers out mean on the pages? I couldn't ask my question earlier.
What, what number are you at?
152.
Oh, something we already passed. 152 is Human Res-, okay, here's Dan to answer your question.
Yeah, this is back to the Comp Reserve. So once a contract is settled and the funding is approved, we make a transfer out of the Comp Reserve into the appropriate budget so that we can pay the payroll through that appropriate budget.
So that 133 is going out and it's going somewhere else? Do we know?
Yes, to other town budgets throughout. So it's an adjustment made each year when we have the Comp Reserve that we go through this practice and we fix every budget so that they have the appropriate funding in them to pay for the salaries.
In the other budgets, would I see an in then?
Uh, yes. Not here because there's limited space here, but I, I do have a sheet that shows all the, it's not here today, but I'm, I'm happy to share that with-
That would be great. How do I find out and get that from you?
I'm Dan O'Donnell, the Finance Director. You can find me online, call my office either way, that's fine.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Continuing on. Westford Public Schools, $69,716, no, sorry, start again. Neshoba Tech, $1,484,842. Under Public Works, Department of Public Works, $278,824. Engineering Department, $355,783. Highway Department, $2,493,678. Waste Disposal Services, $2,641,789. Waste Water Treatment Management, $259,864. Cemetery Department, $204,277. Under Health and Human Services, Board of Health, $510,220. Council on Aging, $615,77. Veteran Services, $114,797. Under Culture and Recreation, Library, $1,886,787. Parks and Grounds, $516,074. Land Management, $99,300. Historical Commission, $14,250. Okay. Got it? The Star Commission, right? Okay. Oh, and Land Management, did I miss one? I'm sorry.
Moderator?
Yes, what microphone are you at, please?
Over here. Just clarification or for my ignorance, should this, the third column add up to 4.6? And the, how come at the end it comes to 3 point something? Should these represent the two override amounts, one of these columns?
So, I'm gonna let Dan answer that. I'm not very good with numbers.
The total operating is like at 7.329. Shouldn't that be 6.8 or are they apples and oranges?
I think it, doesn't it also include the first page, Dan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna come see you so I can see what you're showing there.
I'm just the one, so the one we're going through, the variance is the, I'm looking at the totals, but shouldn't something come to 6.8 million? No? What? The editing, is it?
Yeah, it's only at the end.
That one be 6.8? For the override? Are they not adding up?
So, no, it's, it's fine. So here we have, you see on the bottom of page eight, the variance from FY '24, '25 is 7.329 million. So we have all sorts of different funds in here, including Water Enterprise and whatnot. So all those increases are included in those. The actual new revenue that we're applying to the FY '25 budget is 4.2 million. That's the override amount. The rest is being raised by the tax levy under Prop 2 and a half, increases to state aid, local revenue, and so on. So these won't, these numbers won't match.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay, great. So I have now land, a hold on land management and historic commission, correct? So will the person with the hold on land management come to the microphone? Is that you, sir? Okay. Is there someone with a hold on land? Okay. All right, great. No, I don't think he's-
No, it's the person there in the black hat.
Okay, thank you. Sir, do you have the hold on land management? Yeah, okay.
Doug Burns, four Black Bear Lane. So earlier when we were talking about the Town Manager, we said that we were transferring a position from land management into the, into the Town Manager's office. Yeah, I look at the money and it says, "We didn't have any personal services in 2023 or '24." And I don't see the $122,000 or $112,000 being a negative number in this budget.
We'll get you an answer to that.
Thank you.
The Director of Land Use Management's salary is in the 170 line item on page five. It is not in the Land Use Management item. That is just expenses.
Madam Moderator, there was also a hold on trash.
Okay.
I have a question.
Excuse me, could you, could you repeat that again?
She said that the land use position is in line 170. Is that right, Kristen? 170?
The Permitting Department?
Yes, yes. It's not inclu-, it's never been included in the land management budget that you're looking at in 660.
Okay, so why do I not see a significant decrease in the Permitting Department's budget?
The Assistant Town Manager for Land Use and Economic Development's salary is continuing to come out of the Permitting Department's budget. It is not in the Town Manager's budget.
Then why is the Town Manager's budget going up $112,000?
The Town Manager's budget is going up $112,000 for the Sustainability Coordinator and the Wellness Coordinator that are partially funded at this point in time.
Oh, so we are, we are doing an increase to that budget because we're using, they were funded by a single-source thing before?
Partially.
Okay. And so those are up for being nixed if we don't approve this budget?
The Sustainability Coordinator position would not be approved in the override budget, excuse me, in the non-override budget. The Wellness Coordinator position stays in both budgets.
And what does a Wellness Coordinator do?
Now, do you want to get?
What, you wanna spend the money without answering?
Okay.
The Wellness Coordinator works in concert with all of our employees as well as all town residents to make sure they are lined up with the services that they need related to social services, community wellness. They run programs, they run social groups. I'd be happy to talk offline with you more about that person's position. They've been in place for two years now.
Thank you.
Okay. I see a line forming there, but you folks, are those all folks that had questions, holds?
This will be on that 170 question.
Yeah, I know you. I'm just asking-
There was a hold on trash as well, so the second person's line for that.
Where's trash? I don't think we, I don't think we've gotten to trash yet. Oh, 430. Okay. I see. All right, I'll take that. So, sir, for the land man, land use.
So the question I have was the Permitting Department-
I'm sorry, Historical Commission, is that what you're on?
No, the Permitting Department, 170.
Okay, 170.
And 241 Building Department. Doesn't the permits come out of the Building Department?
170.
Oh, I'm sorry. Scott Patton, 53, Plain Road.
Okay, we'll get you an answer to that.
Thank you.
The Permitting Department is the umbrella for Building Department, ZBA, Planning Board, Conservation, and others. The building inspector's primary roles in their building permits do come out of the Building Department budget.
But my understanding is a building permit fee which should cover that department.
The building permit fee goes into the General Fund and then we would allocate through Town Meeting, as we're doing today, to fund the Building Department.
So building permit fees would also cover other departments that have nothing to do with the Building Department?
They may.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so I, there's a hold on 430 Waste Disposal Services? Yes?
Leslie May Cumber, 11 Shawnee Place. The town does not provide trash and recycling services to private communities, and the number of private communities has grown significantly over the last few decades. Has the town considered removing the trash and recycling services from the budget and billing the residents who use those services directly?
Okay. Go ahead, Kristen, yeah.
So my understanding was the question, has the town considered taking out of trash and recycling out of the budget overall? Is that correct?
Yes.
That is certainly something that has been discussed. It has not been discussed in great detail. The Select Board has that in the Budget Task Force Report to look at, but it is not part of the fiscal '25 budget.
Thank you. All right, there were apparently two holds on Westford Public Schools, which I'm gonna take. I guess I didn't hear them. So, at microphone C, Kathy Creed, Ten Vos Hill Road. Madam Moderator, I was just gonna say, I really appreciate the transparency that the town gives us and we can scrutinize line by line where the money is going. I was just wondering why there's only one line for Westford Public Schools and one line for Neshoba Tech. We'll get you an answer to that.
So for the Westford Public Schools, this is statute that they have one line for their budget that they have. It's, they're one department of the town, so that's why there's only one line. They have lots of backup material. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm sure they're happy to provide it for you. Same with Neshoba Tech. This is just an assessment. We're part of a regional schools district that we, we're with seven other communities and we're assessed quarterly and we just kind of check four times a year to them and that, that covers the budget. So it's just one line for that as well. They also have a lot of detail in their budget on their website as well.
And sir?
Yeah, kind of digging off from their, the variance-
Yeah, kind of digging off from their, the variance. I'm particularly looking at the variance of $3.8 million, a little upwards of that for Westford Public Schools. And I would like to know, what are the top increases, meaning the top five? If you do have that number, you could share with us, as in what was there? And secondly, I know this particular school, Westford Academy, had problems with the air conditioning system, and I would hope that is included in that budget for the well-being of the students who are studying here.
All right, can we get an answer to that? I think the quest, two questions, one. Oh, sorry, sir, can you give us your name and address?
Yeah, Sean Bocci, 14 Briarwood, Westford.
Thank you. So, I think the two questions are, what are the top five drivers for increases for the budget this year? And something about the, the air handling?
The air conditioning system needs to be overhauled or replaced for Westford Academy, yes. Hopefully, that has been.
We'll get you an answer to that.
Hi, thanks for the question. As Kristen last talked about, as how we got here, that question, the three things that the schools are facing is an increase in the bus transportation contract that goes out to bid every three to five years, and we are paying the same, like the market rate, so that went up. Also, the state adjusted private special education out of district tuitions, and that went up by 14%, whereas historically that was 3%. And the third major increase in this budget is our commitment to average teacher pay. That is a town-wide commitment. There are risks with not adequately paying our staff that are working hard with low morale and retention issues. So, we are acting in that commitment by providing that.
And the capital process for the?
And the question about the HVAC units for WA goes through our capital process, so that is not in our operating budget.
Okay, thank you. Any, just a quick follow-up. What about the increase you mentioned in terms of salaries or wages? What is, what is it around? Like, could you give a percentage for that?
What? Okay.
During our most recent negotiations, we go through a rigorous benchmarking process that is the industry practice to include our DART districts, which are defined by the state. It stands for District Analysis.
Review.
Review Tool. And it compares us to 10 districts that are most like us based on our students, and then we also compare us to our geographically adjacent communities. That data showed that our teachers were 3% to 4% below average, so this includes that, reaching up to that target for the salaries.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right, okay. Okay. And just, I think it was made clear, but just to point out, town meeting only votes on the bottom line of the school budget, not on any of the individual components, and that's by state law. Doesn't have anything to do with our school department or?
School committee.
Yeah, school committee decides those things. Okay, moving on, I am at line 710. Debt service, $3,609,512. Unclassified, $1,870,301.
Hold.
Is that a hold?
Yes.
Okay. Employee benefits and miscellaneous, $10,981,278. Transfers, is there a hold on that? Okay. Transfers to and from trusts, $14,195,693. Community preservation fund, $1,121,028. Water enterprise fund, $5,020,758. Recreation enterprise fund, $1,194,227. Ambulance enterprise fund, $1,686,441. Stormwater enterprise fund, $1,423,264. I have two holds, yeah, on the unclassified numbered, line 940, and employee benefits and miscellaneous, 945. Can the person with the hold on unclassifieds at microphone B? Thank you.
Deborah Sarianni, 59 Graniteville Road. Could you help me understand 1.7 million unclassified expenses?
Dan O'Donnell. 940, Dan.
Okay, so this is, these are the offsets from our enterprise accounts. So, basically what we do is we calculate how much, like the health insurance, the indirect costs, like the town manager's salary, my salary, and so on, the retirement assessment from each of our four enterprises, and it offsets the overall employee benefits and miscellaneous budget. So, this is offsetting the general fund budget. It's a good thing.
Thank you.
And with the person with the hold on employee benefits and miscellaneous, please. At microphone D.
Jan, Tapawa Road. I would like a little more explanation about employee benefits and what exactly miscellaneous is.
We'll get you that answer.
So, this account includes the health insurance for retirees on Medicare. It includes the pension assessment from male sex retirement for town employees and school employees who are not teachers. It includes our property insurance, our auto insurance, all these different insurances that were assessed each year. There's a small life insurance policy in there, and that's, that's basically the crux of it.
So pensions aren't on the table to reduce that, and life insurance for retirees?
The, the life insurance budget is about, what, $5,500, I believe, out of this amount. The pension assessment is part of master general laws where they, we do have to fund our pensions for our employees by 2040 in full, so this is the assessment that they charge each year.
Emily, have your attention. Can we just confirm that our school teachers are not employed 12 months out of the year?
Let, let school committee answer.
Yeah.
I'm entitled to.
Our school teachers operate under a contract that has for 180, for the school year, for 184 days is what the typical contract is. We do have some employees that do work year-round.
Thank you.
All right. Before we move to the vote, I want to ask for the recommendation of the finance committee.
Hi, Christina Green, I'm chair of the finance committee. The finance committee voted six to two to recommend Article 1.
And the select board, please.
Madam Moderator, the select board voted five zero in favor.
And the school committee?
Six to zero in favor.
All right. We're ready to move to a vote. I think we've had substantial discussion. Is there anybody that still has an outstanding question?
I'd like to.
All right, at microphone C.
Kim Davis, Lawson Road. Clarification question, I guess. If we're going to be automatically charged the 2.5%, and I believe you said that was about 2/3 of the increase, is that correct so far?
No, I think he said 1/3, 2/3.
1/3 is 2.5%? Or 1/3 is the override?
I guess I need you up here, Dan. I can't. Okay. We have the chair of the select board, Tom Clay.
Yeah, so under Prop 2, Dan's gonna be up here to help me. So, under Prop 2.5, your tax increase, your tax bill will go up. The levy goes up 2.5%, but your individual assessment may change, so it won't be exactly 2.5%. That happens every year and has happened for many, many years in the same way. What the override would do is for an average taxpayer house, the average value of a home in Westford, it would be about $750 if the whole 6.8 got voted. Now, we're voting for that 6.8 in two pieces. We're voting in the 4.2, which would be in support of the shortfall for fiscal '25. So, if you vote for yes on Article 1, you'll be voting 4.2. So, that's about 2/3 of that 750. So, for the average home, about $500 would be associated with a yes on 1. Now, if we also fund the stabilization fund, which helps us get to our three-year plan, that's roughly 1/3 of that total override, so that would be roughly an additional $250. Does that help?
That does, thank you.
Thank you.
So, just, I, I would like to just make one comment relative to that. I would support and implore everyone to vote yes on Articles 1, 2, and 3. It amounts to about $60 per month, and I would also encourage everyone who can't afford it to apply to the town for those variances that they, for which they are eligible. It doesn't seem like a huge sum to do $60 per month. Thank you.
All right, I'd like to keep the remaining comments brief so we can get to a vote. Yes?
Yeah. My name is Wayne Furnall, 3 Blue Brook Lane. If the moderator would entertain the opportunity for one of the two dissenting votes on the finance committee, just to make a statement about why they dissented.
No, no, that's really, that's really not appropriate. Okay. Do either?
Someone's confused about the increase. Can I just clarify at the same point?
I don't think you. Who's, so do either, can either of the dissenting finance committee members make a? Excuse me.
Madam Moderator.
What do you mean, no?
Madam Moderator.
Somebody asked the question, we're gonna get it answered, just like if you asked a question, I would get it answered.
Madam Moderator.
Who is speaking?
Over here, microphone C.
Yes.
Nate McKinnon, Sherlock Lane. Madam Moderator, the hour is late, we're coming up on the noon time hour.
I agree, Nate.
I respectfully ask that we move the question.
Well, there's a question on the floor before you, Nate. I'll take the motion to move the question after if we need to. Do either of the dissenting votes on the finance committee want to make a statement? Okay, Heather. Try to keep it.
I'll be brief.
Short.
Heather Fitzpatrick, I'm on the finance committee. This is my ninth year on the committee. We go through all these numbers in great detail, and at the end of the day, the short answer is, I believe that there is more room to reduce this budget, to make the pressure on all the individual taxpayers a little bit less, and I don't feel the town did its best at coming up with the minimum override to ask for.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you for being brief. All right. Point of order, Madam Moderator? One second. One thing at a time. What is?
Can we clarify the confusion? I think people think it's a fifty.
Is this what you were saying, Tom? Okay. Apparently, there's some confusion about the increase. Tom Clay's gonna clarify what he said before and make it clearer.
So, to be extra, extra clear, so this 2.5% that goes up every year, that's been going up 2.5% every year, that's about $250 for an average house. The override amount would be in addition to that. So, we just want to make it clear that 750 we talked about, you would also have the 2.5% that happens anyway, so 500, and then the additional 250. Thanks.
All right. Megan?
It's quick, but if you allowed a no vote from FinCom to speak as to why they feel that way, it's only fair to also let a yes vote from FinCom in support to speak to why they support it.
I think the yes votes have all been expressed by the finance committee.
Except that Dennis also already spoke.
Who are you, who are you asking? Which committee are you asking for something from?
FinCom, please, to be fair.
Christina Green, Chair of the Finance Committee.
So, the majority of the finance committee agrees with the override for this reason. If we don't pass this override, the, we'll put the town at much risk, and we didn't want to do that in our public safety and education and other areas. The majority of the committee also recommends the stabilization fund to manage the expenses over the next three years. Since we know these increases are coming, there is no magic bullet that's gonna reduce this number. We also agree that the compromise that the, that the select board and the school committee came to with the finance committee, we are happy with that. They did reduce the budget by 1.1 million, and they have committed to working with the finance committee in the future to work on more efficiencies.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote now.
May I ask a question?
So, if you agree with Article 1 and wish to pass the override budget, you'll be voting yes. If you disagree with Article 1 and do not wish to pass the override budget, you'll be voting no. Is it a point of order?
No, I just, one more question. My name is Susan Tu for 11 Rome Drive. I just want to do the calculations, so when he's saying that.
No, I'm sorry, we're, we're through with discussion. I'm sorry, we're moving on to the vote now. Thank you for your question, but we're through with discussion. All right. So, again, if you want to pass the override in Article 1, you'll vote with the green button, yes, and if you don't, you'll vote with the red button, no. Okay? Wait until I tell you the vote is open.
It's open.
It's a simple majority for this article. Thank you. Ready?
It's open.
Voting is open. I want to apologize to everyone in the event I've been short on anything. I'm really just trying to do my best to move things along. That's inappropriate, inappropriate. And I just want to say the learning curve's tremendous. You're doing great with your clickers. All right, the voting is closed.
Motion passed, 1190, 694.
The motion passes with a 2/3 majority.
Straight majority.
I'm sorry, with a straight majority. The numbers are 1190 in favor, 694 opposed. All right, now I have a very important question. It's 12 o'clock. We have two options. We can either break and go to lunch, or try to do Articles 2 and 3 while the budget stuff is fresh in our minds. Raise your hand if you want to go forward with Articles 2 and 3. Raise your hand if you're starving. Raise your hand if you're starving and need lunch. Oh, my gosh, you're the only one. Okay, let's move on to Article Two. Okay, under Article Two, I have a motion that the town establish an override stabilization fund to be used for the future payment of any expenses of the general fund. Is there a second to that motion?
Yes.
Okay, we've had a lot of discussion on this. If folks have questions, come up to the microphone. Otherwise, we'll move right to the vote. I don't see any questions. You're so smart. Everybody's done a great job educating you. Okay. So, this is a 2/3 vote. Because we're creating a stabilization fund, and state law requires when you create a stabilization fund, it must be a 2/3 vote of town meeting. So, if you want to vote yes to create the stabilization fund and put the money in it, well, that's the next article, so I'm not gonna say that. If you want to create, all you're doing is creating the stabilization fund with this article. If you want to vote yes, you'll press the green clicker, the green button on your clicker. If you want to vote no, you'll press the red button. Are you ready? The motion fails to achieve a 2/3 majority. The vote is...
1180, yes.
1180, yes. 636, no. So, we are now going to have a motion to, I believe, to dismiss Article Three, because without Article Two, Article Three doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, so, as described by the moderator, because we, procedurally, we don't, we just voted not to create the fund, it doesn't make sense to allocate the money. We actually can't raise the levy, because we have nowhere to put it. So, the Select Board is gonna make a motion to dismiss Article Three.
Does everybody understand?
Yeah.
Yeah? Go ahead. We have a question.
You're gonna do it backwards, no?
No, no, that'll take, that'll take a while. You think we should do Article One? Okay.
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. Is it possible to reconsider if somebody from the losing side makes a motion?
No, no, it is not.
Okay.
I specifically have been saying that I'm not gonna reconsider any votes unless there's a technical or procedural error that's pointed out.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
Is it possi, is it, Denali Delmar, 8 Dunnstable Road. Is it possible to go ahead with this vote and put the money someplace else in a holding pattern somewhere?
I think this is what's required by state law, but I'll let the Chair of the Select Board answer that.
And does it require just a minimum...
Right. So, if the question is, could we raise the money and do something else with it? We've actually just voted on the fiscal '25 budget, so town meeting has taken a position on what we should be doing with the spending. We can't spend anything else that we raise. There's no way to use the money. So, I understand your point. If people are interested in this issue, we will have a ballot vote coming up. If people vote yes on the second article on the ballot for that amount of money, we could come back to a subsequent town meeting and revisit this issue again. But for today, because we didn't create the fund, we can't raise additional money. We can't spend it, because we've already voted on what we're authorized to spend, and we don't have anywhere to put it, because we didn't achieve 2/3 on the stabilization fund.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Daniel Kilstonk from 168 Main Street. I'm just wondering, the 2.5% override, okay, we got that. So, what is the percentage increase that we just voted on? Is it 2.5?
No, no. We voted...
Obviously not.
Okay. The override budget passed.
And what percentage increase is that over last year's?
We'll get you an answer to that. So, the question is, what's the percentage increase from the override budget to last year's budget?
So, the overall budget increase is 5.7%. It's on this screen sheet on the bottom right corner of Page Eight.
Okay. Before I take any more questions, we're talking about the motion to dismiss Article Three. So, if you have a question about the motion to dismiss Article Three?
It's a question, my name is Shoshana Perry, 20 Acton Road. It's a question about what the head of the selectmen just said about maybe coming back to another town meeting. Can I...
You want to know what he meant? I'll let him explain it.
No. I guess I'm to be informed, voters at the ballot box. Can you explain what we just voted down better, so that we know if we don't, didn't pass that, what's gonna be the implication?
Right. So, the, what we had presented for you today was a plan for fiscal '25. We did pass that. And then, we also wanted to bring forward a plan that would address the budget challenges in '26, '27, '28. The plan was to create this special account that requires 2/3, and then fund that account. That's what we were gonna do in Article Three. Because we didn't get enough votes, we didn't get to 2/3 to create the account, then we can't raise the money, because statute, according to the rules, we have nowhere to put it. So, what I meant was, if we vote, now, you have an opportunity to weigh in on this again at the ballot. So, when you vote on the ballot, there's two ballot articles. One is basically the same thing we just voted on in Article One. It's a fiscal '25 budget, plus the amount of money needed, the 4.2 that we've been talking about. And then, you'll also have a chance to vote on 2.6. That'll still be on the ballot. So, what we could do, the Select Board could decide to do, is if that passes successfully at the ballot, particularly with a large margin, we could say, we want to discuss it, maybe make some alterations, and bring the same concept to you, back to you, either in fall town meeting or next spring. We may come back and say, okay, we've heard you, we've made some changes, we saw this happen at the ballot box, so we're gonna propose this new or slightly changed version for this special stabilization fund and the amount to fund it. We could come back and do that. We haven't decided that. That's something the Select Board will have to take up later. Hope that helps.
Sir, is this about the motion to dismiss?
Yes.
Okay.
So, my name is Stefan Gopel at 19 Ramitzen Road. It sounds like by us losing two, three is dead, but we're gonna vote to dismiss it. What if we don't vote to dismiss it? Like, what if that wins?
Yeah, it makes no sense, and in addition...
Correct me if I'm wrong, they can't put the money if there's no stabilization fund.
Yeah. By state, by state law, if there's no place to put that money, and since we voted down the stabilization fund, you can't collect it. So, the article becomes meaningless, which is why the Select Board is trying to make it easy by saying, let's just dismiss it.
So, what if we don't?
Yeah, well, if you don't, it has the same effect. I mean, if you would rather vote against it as opposed to dismiss it, it has the same effect. If you want to vote for it, it has no effect. So, no matter what your vote is here, we have no effect. We're just trying to do it efficiently.
Okay.
Okay. Question?
Is this on the motion to dismiss?
Yes.
Is this on the motion to dismiss?
Yes.
Go ahead, name and address.
Joyce Carpenter, 81 Providence Road. I just don't understand why we wouldn't vote on this if voting on the ballot has a consequence for us.
Okay, I'm gonna let Town Council address this.
Hello, everyone. This is Greg Corbo from Town Council's office. I just want to try to offer some clarification here. So, Articles Two and Three were a two-step process to do one thing, create and fund a stabilization fund for the override portion of the money. So, in Article Two, you would've had to vote to create this fund, and that required a 2/3 vote, which was not achieved, which means now, there is no fund. In Article Three, the only purpose of Article Three was to put money into that stabilization fund, which now does not exist. So, there is no place to put that, that money, and there is no effect that a yes vote on Article Three can achieve. However, that portion of the override still stays on the ballot for the election. And so, if at the election, the voters choose to vote yes to put money aside for that stabilization fund, the yes vote at the election would not have an effect unless, at a subsequent town meeting, that stabilization fund is created and an appropriation is made at town meeting. So, even though a yes vote at this meeting cannot be made, it can be that you can come back at a subsequent meeting and take that vote again if there is a positive vote at the election.
So, question clarification. I've been hearing the same word.
I'm sorry. Are you speaking from the microphone?
Yes, I am.
Can I get your name and address, please?
Yes. Elizabeth Strenger, 14 Phillips. So, I've been hearing several combinations of words, town meeting, ballot. Very clearly, can someone explain whether we at this meeting are allowed to vote at the ballot?
Yes, yes. Every registered voter can vote at the ballot. In order for an override to pass, it has to pass both at town meeting and at the ballot. It cannot be put into effect unless it passes in both places.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that.
Okay, great.
Wayne Fernal, 3 Blue Brook Lane.
Wait, one minute, Wayne. I just want, I need to say a couple of things first. Number one, if people leave and hand you their clickers, you need to deposit those clickers in the box at the exit. If you're holding two clickers, you shouldn't be holding two clickers. If anyone is, they need to deposit the second clicker in a box at the exit. That's number one. Number two, can we make sure, please, there was a second to the motion to dismiss?
Yes.
Okay. And Wayne, did you just move the question? Okay. Do we need to vote on moving the question, or would you like to just go immediately to the vote?
Vote.
Is that good enough, Wayne? Thank you. All right. All in favor of dismissing Article...
Three.
Three? I've lost track. Vote yes by pressing the green button of your, oh, no. You know what? I'm gonna take it by a voice phone. I think I can do this by voice phone. All in favor of dismissing Article Three, please say aye.
Aye.
Yikes. All opposed.
Aye.
Okay, it's not unanimous. It definitely passes. All right. We are at Article Four. I'm gonna explain what Article Four is, and then, if you want to do it now, we will, and if you don't, we'll break for lunch. Article Four is a regular, non-override budget. It's the budget with all the override article, override items removed. Basically, the budget we just went over with all the override items removed, because even though we passed the override budget in Article One, if the override doesn't pass at the ballot, remember, it has to pass in both places, we need a budget to fall back on, or else you'll be back here in a month with me again, and you don't want that. I love you all, but I don't want it either. So, this is just a simple, non-override budget that's only to be put in place if the override fails at the ballot, and that's part of the motion. It specifically says, only if the override fails at the ballot. Okay? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any questions on that motion? All right, I'm gonna try and do this by voice as well.
Do you have a hands?
Is there somebody on the microphone?
No.
Point of order? Sorry. Kristi Bates, 23 Pierce Avenue. I apologize, I thought we were going line through line. I couldn't hear what you said. I do have an amendment.
All right. Let's hear your amendment, Kristi.
All right. This is, this amendment is in case Article One does not pass at the ballot. My amendment is to add $378,000 to the Westford Public Schools budget, changing the total from 67,000,207,355 to 67,585,355. 67 million.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I can talk to it, too.
I need you to say what effect that amendment will have on the budget.
So, this is the amount needed to reinstate 26 elementary school reading a math interventionist. The amount is the interventionist salaries, plus the academic coaches' salaries that already are included in this budget and will no longer be needed. While Article One passed here, it may still fail at the polls, and this additional funding will preserve the 26 jobs that are servicing 500 students for the next school year. Since the budget does not have to be balanced until October, an offset does not need to be determined today, it's possible that additional funds will be found when the state finalizes funding towards the end of July. If not, free cash could be used as the offset. This reduction of free cash is unlikely to reduce our bond rating. While it's not prudent to use free cash for recurring expenses, this would allow the school administration to develop a solid plan for needed interventionist services. An approved amendment does not guarantee that the school committee would use these additional funds for retaining interventionists, but I hope they would honor the will of the town meeting if this amendment does pass. Thank you.
Kristi, do you have your amendment in writing?
Yes.
All right. Are there any questions about the amendment? Are you going to the microphone, Tescup? Okay. You don't have to run. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Joyce Carpenter, 81 Providence Road. As I understand the amendment, it would be additional money to the budget in Article 4. Can we add that money without an override?
I'm going to have the Finance Director answer that for you.
Yes, so at this town meeting, we don't have to balance the budget, so we just pass a budget here. At the October Special Town Meeting, we're allowed to make adjustments. At that time, we have final state aid figures, local revenue figures, and our new growth from our tax levy. So we are able to make adjustments in the future.
And also, microphone C. Yes, sir. You good? Okay. Yes, Kathy.
Kathy Lynch on Rush Road. I suggest we table this emotion till after the election. Why do that now?
So are you making a motion to table the amendment?
Yes, I guess I am.
Okay. Okay. Right. So Kathy, you can't table something from one town meeting to the next. You can either advocate to vote against it or make a motion to dismiss.
I motion to dismiss. I don't think it's appropriate now.
Okay. So this is, so... Okay. So we're now speaking, is there a second to the motion to dismiss? All right. So we're now speaking to the motion to dismiss the amendment. So the only things we should be talking about are the amendment, dismissing the amendment itself, okay? No, it doesn't matter. She's made the motion. Anybody want to speak to, yes, Megan?
If we dismiss this motion of the amendment and wait, those positions will already be cut. So what, are we going to recall all of those professionals to their jobs and hope that they'll come back? The timing of this doesn't make sense.
Okay. Anybody else? Emily?
Emily Taylor, 9 Texas Road. It seems to me that we needed to get the will of this town meeting in regard to proposing additions back to the past override in relation to this budget. I mean, obviously, the will of the people was by a majority to pass the override of this town meeting. So I think it makes sense to go ahead and vote on the amendment, and I would vote against the article to dismiss, because it's also not on the ballot. So the people who go to the ballot boxes won't have a chance to vote on that amendment.
Okay. Microphone B.
Don Surianni, Grenfell Road. Madam Moderator, what is currently on the floor?
A motion to dismiss the amendment made by Kristi Bates, which, and the amendment was to add money to the school budget.
And my understanding is, just from conferring with people in the area where I'm sitting, is there wasn't a second to that motion made.
To the motion, to, for the budget motion?
Correct. Yeah, I don't think that was mentioned from the moderator or from anybody on the floor to actually make a second. If that is the case, though, I would move the underlying question, which is Article number four.
Okay. What's on the floor now, there definitely was a second to the amendment. And what's on, definitely. And what's on the floor now is the amendment, okay? Are you saying there was no second to the amendment, or there was no second to the underlying motion?
Yes, so there was no second that we heard that you mentioned.
No, I'm afraid, I'm afraid you're, that's incorrect. There were seconds...
I seconded that.
There were a couple of seconds.
Very good, as I said, I consult, we couldn't hear that over here.
Thank you for keeping us honest.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see, I think, Rachel, I think you're the only one at the microphone, so go ahead. Oh, sorry! Sorry. Okay, in the red shirt. I'm going to go there first.
Christopher Fisher, 100 Nutting Road. I'm just curious, can we get anybody in position of authority with the school committee to commit to spending the funds the way that the amendment is requesting?
I don't think that this school committee, or any committee, can bind a future committee in any case, because there are elections coming up, it'll be different committees, but I'll let them answer for themselves.
I appreciate the amendment. I think that it's only fair for us to deliberate on this in a public meeting where you can hear all of us, so we would respectfully wait to deliberate on the usage of that additional funds at our next business meeting.
Rachel?
Rachel Amato, 88 Chamberlain Road. I just had a quick question. So if we vote in favor of this amendment, plus we voted in favor of the override, then if the override passes at the ballot, then does this amendment still take effect?
No, because Article 4 only goes into play if the override is voted down at the ballot box.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there folks over there? Yes. Okay. Microphone D.
Elizabeth Almeida, 41 West Street. And before we vote on this amendment, I would like to hear from the Select Board and School Committee if you are supporting the amendment.
We'll get that answer for you.
Madam Moderator, a point of parliamentary inquiry?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. When I was last at the microphone, I asked what was pending on the floor. My understanding was, your decision was, it was the...
The amendment.
Motion to dismiss?
Yes, the motion to dismiss the amendment.
So is a motion to dismiss debatable?
Yes, yes it is.
Only for parliamentary inquiries, but not for merits and demerits?
Let me just check my town meeting time.
And that would be, that would be compatible with your previous?
It is debatable.
That seems to vary with your earlier ruling, which was procedural, when we had an earlier motion to dismiss.
Don, that's for a motion to reconsider, not a motion to dismiss. What I had said before was that I would not entertain a motion to reconsider any vote that had already been taken and gone to a final vote, except for procedural issues.
I don't disagree with that statement that you made, or to suggest that you didn't say it. What I am saying is, earlier in the town meeting, there was a motion to dismiss. You define the parameters for discussion around that motion as to be constrained by procedural questions, not questions of merit or demerit, as the underlying value of proposition, but questions constrained by parliamentary inquiries.
I wish I could say that I remember exactly what I said, or...
I think in line with what I just retold.
Okay.
So the question is, can people come to the microphone now to make inquiries?
Don, can you hold up, can you hold up a minute, please? the right time to discuss this, and that frankly should be what we're discussing right now. But dismiss it, or don't dismiss it, vote yes or vote no, are very close in a motion like this, so it's expanded a little bit. But the motion itself is valid, and I'm trying to expedite the questions that are being asked on it, about it, as quickly as I can. So I'm going to let this, the Select Board and the School Committee come forward and answer the last question.
Since you have Senate, since you have counsel there, is the motion to dismiss debatable beyond parliamentary inquiries? That's, that's why I came to this microphone, to ask that parliamentary inquiry.
I don't know that there's a limitation. I'll let Counsel answer himself.
Through you, Madam Moderator. As the moderator explained, the motion to dismiss was based on a procedural question of, is this the right time to be voting on this amendment? Since there is no funding source for the amendment, we'd have to come back at a later time for this to take effect. The moderator is entertaining debate on that question, which is very closely related or even merging with the merits of the amendment itself. The scope of that debate is something that is within the moderator's discretion. She is not bound by formal rules of parliamentary procedure. The scope of debate is up to the discretion of the moderator, and in my opinion, she's exercising that discretion appropriately by allowing people to speak in the manner that they are.
All right, let's hear from the Chairman of the Board of Select, the Select Board and the School Committee Chair.
Okay, so we're going to do this together. We're responding to Elizabeth's question about what the board's position is. You've heard us say before that using free cash is not a good practice to bridge an operating budget shortfall. The vote we just took in this particular case, because the no-override situation is so dramatic and such a shock to the system, we voted 3-1 in favor of making that adjustment. It does go against best practice, but in that specific case of the no-override case, it would be such a shock to the system, it'd be such a big impact on schools, that the Select Board voted 3 to 1 that we would make this adjustment, the $349,000 adjustment for the school budget.
And the School Committee voted 5 to 0 to support it.
All right. Alyssa.
Madam Moderator, could we get the language in writing on the Jumbotron, so we know what we're voting on?
Yep, we'll do that while I take the next question. Sir, the microphone to the left.
I just, James Coaches, Forge Village Road. I, like us, it seems like there's a general consensus here that we want to see what you're going to put on the thing, which is great. If, for some reason, we don't even use this particular budget, after all the conversation, if the override does pass, the whole thing's OBE anyway. It's not even going to ever come into effect. So let's just hear the vote, please, and maybe see the literate, you know, the version of it up on the board.
They're putting it up on the, on the screen now.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I have a point of order. Ryan from 62 Providence.
Ryan, I need your last name, please.
Oh, Ryan Rawl, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to immediately vote on the motion to dismiss, given the amount of debate that's already been heard on the question of timing.
Okay, you can only make that motion to vote on the, it's the motion to dismiss the amendment.
Correct.
Yes, you're right, I'm sorry. All right. That motion to move the question is not debatable, so we're now going to go immediately to the vote. The vote is on the, yes? Go to the microphone, please.
The original amendment isn't visible, so we don't know what we're discussing right now.
Alyssa, I know who you are, but everybody else needs your name and address.
Alyssa Nacash in Holzberg, Betty Lane.
Okay, now start again, please.
The guidelines here, I believe, are amendments are to be presented orally and then in writing, so that you can display it for the attendees to read and evaluate.
Yeah.
So, thank you. That's what I was waiting for.
Okay. This is not debatable. We have to vote on the motion to move the question. So what we're voting on is whether or not to terminate debate on the amendment. If you vote yes, that will end...
On the motion to dismiss.
On the motion, not on the motion to dismiss, only amendment.
They're still on the motion to dismiss the amendment. We're on the motion to dismiss the amendment.
What did he move the question on?
Sorry, hold on one minute.
So there's an amendment, there's a motion to dismiss the amendment.
Okay, so we're terminating debate on the motion to dismiss the amendment?
Okay. Sorry. Do-over. Forget everything I said. Not everything, but the last couple of seconds. So we are voting on terminating debate on the motion to dismiss the amendment, okay? It's a little complicated. Okay, so we have an amendment on the floor, there's been a motion made to dismiss that amendment, and what we're voting on now is ending debate on the motion to dismiss the amendment. So if you vote yes, we will be ending debate on the motion to dismiss the proposed amendment, and if you vote no, we will be continuing debate on the motion to dismiss. Right? Okay. Think I have it right. All right. Let's try and do this by a voice vote, okay? All in favor of ending debate, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, it's not unanimous, but pretty darn close. It passes with a 2/3 majority. We're ending debate, so now we're moving immediately to the vote on whether or not to dismiss the amendment. Yes?
I'm just, point of order on the actual, the amendment. When it was presented at the microphone, the funds were specifically allocated for restoring the reading and math teachers. That's, language is missing up there.
Kristi, you can address this if you want, but I can also quickly say that you, town meeting cannot direct the School Committee to spend money in any particular way. I think we can leave it at that, Kristi. Yeah. All right, so, where are we?
Voting on the motion to dismiss the amendment.
I got it. We're voting on the motion to dismiss the amendment. So all in favor of dismissing the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that's a majority against dismissing the amendment. All right, so now we are on the, debate of the amendment itself. Does anybody have any comments, or? One moment, please. Yep. Okay, I was right that time. We're back on the, yeah, we'll use the clickers next time. So we're back on the amendment. All right, we're just talking about whether or not to pass the amendment now. Let's start at microphone C.
Jeffrey Sherman, 1 Fairview Drive. I make a motion to move the amendment straight to a vote.
Okay.
Second.
Now we're talking about moving the, moving the amendment, all right? So all in favor of ending debate on the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I don't know who it was, so I'm going to say it wasn't unanimous, but it was definitely more than 2/3. Okay, so we have ended debate, now we're going to go to the vote on the amendment itself.
Is this majority?
This is a simple majority. We're going to use our clickers for this, okay? So all in favor of the amendment, as it's, as it's posted on the screen, you're going to vote with your green button. All opposed, you're going to vote with your red button to say no. Ready, Mike? Voting is open. Forty minutes late. Still not too bad.
No, we can do it after lunch, because we're, I think of lunch as, even though it's a time certain, lunch is something we're doing and we have to finish before we go to it, right? No, they're going to go to lunch. I'm not going to make a mistake if it's... Oh, no, not the MBT. Oh, I thought you... While we're waiting for the vote to register, do you want to announce the logistics?
Sure.
Oh, it's pretty...
So after this, we're going to lunch. Just so everyone knows... Just so everyone knows, the cafeteria, which is right inside these doors, is serving pizza, regular and gluten-free, and water bottles. There are also vending machines where you can get pop and soda, stuff like that. You need... You need to have cash, and we'll stop for 45 minutes in order to do lunch. Oh, yes, you're right. We haven't voted on the underlying article. After we finish with that, we'll go to lunch. People might kill you. Do you think it's done? Voting is closed. The motion to amend passes.
1,003.
1,003, yes.
403.
403, no. All right. Is there somebody at the microphone? I was just told... Yeah, Tom. Okay.
I'm going to save people some time and do another motion to vote and move on Article IV. Oh, Jeff Sherman, 1 Fairview Drive. Sorry for not leading with that.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate on Article IV, which is the budget. It's not debatable, and we need to decide whether we're going to go forward with the vote on Article IV or not. Or continue debate on Article IV. Yes, is there a second to that motion?
Yes!
Okay. So let's use clickers again. Yes. If you want to terminate discussion on Article IV and move directly to the vote, you're going to press your green button on your clicker. If you want to discuss Article IV further, you're going to press the red button on your clicker, okay? Voting is closed. The motion to terminate debate on Article IV passes. The yes votes are 1,330. The no votes are 41. So now we're moving right to the vote on Article IV. Article IV is the non-override budget, which will be in place if the override does not pass at the ballot. If you are in favor of the non-override budget coming into play if it doesn't pass at the ballot, if the override doesn't pass at the ballot, you're going to press the green button for yes. If you're opposed, you'll press the red button for no. Everybody set on that? Check me, did I say it right? Okay.
As amended.
As amended, as amended. If you're leaving for the day after this vote, please be sure to turn your clickers in. If you're staying for lunch, as I said, there's pizza inside, or you could eat your own lunch, al fresco. And when we come back after lunch, we're going to start with the zoning articles, including the MBTA article. Yeah. The motion passes. The votes are 1,226, yes; 128, no. Thank you very much. See you after lunch. Those articles after lunch are very important. In addition to the MBTA articles, it includes a lot of capital expenditures, so I hope to see lots of people back. Thank you for your patience.